Hi, Ms. Ray, can you hear me? Dr. Kabon, can you hear me? I always have issues with this one.
Do you wear any one of your house like me so?
Maybe. Here are probably my son, but I only have it a couple times. Why do you have two soups?
They give us two extra soups. I can't get into the refrigerator, so I don't think we can live in there.
Oh. Okay, so this is what Suzanne just said to me, Janet. Tell me that there's not HR paperwork. Oh, you can be heard.
Hey Janet, you are calling me? Lynn, it sounded like Janet was having some technical difficulty.
Is that Mark?
Yep.
Okay, Mark, you're on. Okay.
On my phone.
Yeah, I got you.
Oh, looks like it might be again on the computer. Okay.
Oh, there's Paula getting on.
Computer, I don't find.
So we have five. Oh, and there's Jaime. Six. I don't know whether Tracy Lambert is on yet, or Lisa Dunick, or Mary Galucci.
I just on the list, I cannot see their names.
Yeah.
Can you still see me?
Can I see you?
Yeah, can you hear me?
You, yeah, I can see you and hear you. There you are. Um, I know it's Tracy Lambert's anniversary tonight. She said she'd call in or try to join us for part of the meeting, so we'll see. Um, but we'll see what, wait a minute and see if Lisa and/or Mary get on. Well, we, we do have a quorum.
Strange.
So.
Texted to you.
Somebody should put themselves on mute who's walking around and talking. Yes, Kristin, there is going to be public comment. I'm just waiting to call the meeting to order. And then the first item on the agenda tonight is public comment. Um, the next item on the agenda is discussion of possible action regarding the school reopening plan. And the third item is public comment. So soon as, since it's 7:03 and we have a quorum, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And um, the first thing on the item is public comment. And Kristin, you put your name in the chat that you'd like to speak. Um, if other people would like to speak, why don't you put your name in the chat? And then I'll call on you in that order. So the first person is Kristin. Kristin DeGray.
Hi, Kristin DeGray, I'm parents of a student at Barrows. And I also work for Wyndham Public Schools. Um, this is really a question, and I know you can't answer questions during public comment, but I'm just wondering if it's something that could possibly be part of discussion. Um, I know that um, many people are curious about the protocol if someone gets sick. And I know that it's probably a complicated protocol, but we've never really heard the specifics of that. Um, and I'm sure a lot of parents would like to hear the specifics of that. So however that information is provided to us, um, okay. And Dr. Youngberg.
We'll be talking about it this evening in the meeting. There will be a little presentation on it and the booklet with all those details is ready.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment? Just uh, put right in the chat or unmute yourself and let me know before we move on.
I just saw a name, Karen.
Karen.
Karen Stube, Stube. Uh, Karen, would you like to unmute yourself and speak?
I would, thank you. Um, so I spoke last night. I am a teacher in Wyndham at Barrows STEM Academy. I've taught for 17 years. And one thing that I would like to state that if the board were to decide that we should postpone opening for another week, let's say, I would recommend that we use the extra time for more PD, specifically in technology and how to teach better online using the cameras that have been included in our classrooms now. Um, I don't know if that was to be brought up later today as well, but I did want to put that out there for anyone else to come in.
Thank you, Karen, and um, we will be talking about several different scenarios tonight. And uh, your, your, your statement is so noted, thank you. And I see somebody else, Ellie Garvey said she agreed with Karen, so thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment? Oh, here's Tracy Lambert. Hi, Tracy. Um, okay, so well, let's, let's go into discussion and possible action regarding the school reopening plan. So when we ended the meeting last night, uh, there was a lot of, there were a lot of conversations that were going to be happening today. Um, and I'm going to hand it over to Superintendent Dr. Tracy Youngberg to fill us in on some of the conversations and thinking that have been going on. And I also know that she has information to share with us from, that from Suzanne, that Suzanne has put together with the help of the nurses that answer some of the questions that people have been having. And I think it would be helpful for us to hear all that as a board before we make any recommendations.
Okay, so, hi, everybody, welcome. Uh, we are having some screen sharing issues that we're trying to figure out, so bear with us. Janet, I just emailed you the document I can't share on my end. Um, last night you asked me to, to come back with three different topics. The first was what happens in the event we have positive COVID cases in our schools, which we have completed the health and safety manual I referenced last night, uh, thanks to Suzanne Crowe, the Assistant Director of People's Services, and Tara Webb, one of our head nurses. Uh, they put a lot of work and effort into it, and all the staff members and families will be receiving the document. Tonight, they're going to give you um, a Reader's Digest version of what happens, a few pages from the larger manual, so that you get a sense of what's going on. I just want to let everyone know that like everything else related to, oh, Janet, that's not the right one. Not yet. Take that down for, we'll get there. Um, I don't know if everybody can still hear me. Uh, like everything else that's related to the reopening of schools, it's a fluid kind of thing. What's, what's the correct procedure and process today? Might not be the correct procedure and process tomorrow, so I want everyone to be flexible. This is the most up-to-date information. And all of the decisions that are made around COVID cases are made in conjunction with the Department of Public Health. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Suzanne. Suzanne, were you able to, to forward your, you weren't to forward the slides to Janet? So she can post them because we, I can't post, I don't know why. Unless you're able to see if you can post. I don't think you're going to be able to, since I can't.
Nope, I'm not able to, but I will go ahead and forward this presentation right now to Janet.
Okay, while you're doing that and Janet gets that screen shared, um, the other thing that I was asked to look into was, was the CIAC decision regarding fall, fall sports. Unfortunately, that meeting only took place at 5:30. I'm not even sure if they're out of the meeting yet, but I don't have any new information related to fall sports and whether or not they're going to take place. So I don't know how the board wants to proceed on that, but I have no new information from last night.
What we should do, since we have a regular board meeting next Wednesday evening, um, we'll know by then. And uh, if we decide we want to do something in a special meeting before then, we can. But um, until we get clarity on what the CIAC decision is, or I don't really think, unless the board members disagree, there's not much we can do tonight.
There's nothing posted on the website. I've been checking to see what there is, and I just checked seconds ago, and there's nothing there yet, so.
Okay. Great, thank you. Yes, Mark?
Along that line, if, if that's the case, I have no, I have no disagreement. But I would, would like to make a motion later on in the meeting that we do not do anything with sports until next Wednesday's meeting. Should the CICA come up with something else tomorrow? I don't want to initiate the vote until we make the, the yes or no decision. So if that's, if that's allowable, I will make that motion later on in the meeting. For a yes or no vote on the board.
It's, it's discussion and possible action, so we certainly could do that, Mark. Okay, so let's hear, um, are we ready to hear? Uh, is there other stuff you want to fill us in? Dr. Youngberg.
Uh, no, other than the good news that the motors we purchased to replace the parts at Natchog actually fit, so we are well on the way to mending the issues over there. So yes, exactly, celebrate. Jenna, are we ready to share Suzanne's screen? Sorry about it, technical difficulties beyond our control.
We're all doing the best we can.
I've gone ahead with the computers, I gotta tell you. I want to go back to being.
Last night's experience, that was pretty distressing.
Only 177 more days of doing this, guys.
I'm telling you, it's something.
Okay, well, can we at least have Suzanne start talking us through it?
Sure, if we can't see it, we can at least hear it and go from there.
Right.
So I, I want to take a moment just to thank the nursing department and Tara Webb, who's here and will be presenting with me. Uh, Tara, did you want to first cover the symptoms?
Uh, sure. So the, there's a lot of symptoms associated with COVID-19. Uh, the Connecticut Department of Public Health has decided to focus on, on just a subset of those symptoms that they think are most relevant in terms of potentially having COVID-19 and obviously then spreading it to others. Um, so that would include, you know, feeling feverish or having a temperature of 104 degrees or higher, uh, that loss of taste of smell that most of you have probably heard about, uh, shortness of breath or difficulty breathing, having chills or an uncontrolled new cough. Uh, in all of these, if this is an issue that you already have, um, then, then you're not going to be excluded from school. Um, so I guess if we go to slide two. Um, you won't be excluded from school or work. Uh, if you have never had a sense of smell, that is not going to exclude you. You can still come to work. If you have a cough because of allergies or asthma, you know, you can still come to school. But it is obviously most important that students and staff stay home when they are not feeling well. Um, and certainly when they have those, uh, one of those key symptoms, and so notify their school nurse.
Oh, Janet, if you go to the one, uh, no, slide three, we did include a daily home screening chart for families and staff members to use. And it does highlight the symptoms that Tara explained. So if, if you are experiencing especially those first three boxes, chills, feeling feverish, temperature, uncontrollable new cough, or loss of taste and smell, you should not be attending school. Again, if you've had close contact or traveled to any states, you know, you do need to call the school nurse because you will have to, you know, self-quarantine during periods of time and/or isolate if you are found to have COVID. The next slide, slide four, kind of starts going into the scenario. So Tara, you want to explain the first one?
Uh, sure. So um, so there's, there's three, there's three, if you include travel, there's four scenarios. Uh, but three scenarios that kind of relate to illness. Uh, so if you have COVID-19 symptoms, but you have not had uh, close contact with someone with COVID-19, so that would be the first scenario. Then um, based on that, there's, there's three sub, three, three courses you can then take. Um, you can get tested, that test can come back negative. As long as you are fever-free and have improvement of symptoms, you can come back, come back to school or work. Um, if you test positive for COVID-19, then you're going to remain home for that isolation period, um, which is at least 10 days from the onset of symptoms, uh, at least 24 hours fever-free without fever-reducing medication. Um, and an improvement of your other symptoms, you obviously can choose not to be tested. Um, and if that, and then that case, we're going to err on the side of caution. You're going to self-isolate for at least 10 days from the onset of symptoms, um, 24 hours fever-free and improvement of those symptoms before you come back. And the caveat to all of these is, um, you know, even if you weren't tested for COVID-19, but you went to the doctor and the doctor swabbed you and you had the flu, uh, because you have an alternate this diagnosis, you also can then return, uh, once you've, you know, met the criteria for that alternate diagnosis. Um, and you know, obviously all of that coming with doctor, uh, doctor documentation. If you want to go to the next slide, we can go to the next. Um, so the next scenario would be someone who has COVID-19 symptoms and also has had close contact with someone who is positive with COVID-19. Um, so again, they can be tested. Uh, if they test negative, um, they're still going to be in that isolation for at least 10 days. Um, you want the symptoms free for the 24 hours. If they test positive, you're still going to follow that same kind of routine. Um, but if you're not tested, then you're going to, you're also going to stay in that same isolation period, going on the presumption that if you have those COVID-19 symptoms and have also had that contact, the likelihood is that you also have COVID-19.
Tara, could you explain to them what it means by having close contact with someone?
I would love to. Um, so close contact is if you have had direct contact with someone. So if you're, uh, if someone comes up to you and sneezes in your face and you are not wearing a mask, that would be a direct contact. Um, and then close contact otherwise would be considered within six feet for greater than 15 minutes. And so both of those have to kind of be met to be considered close contact. Um, and that is again, you know, not wearing a mask um, or the appropriate PPE for the situation, personal protective equipment. So if you are wearing the appropriate personal protective equipment for whatever scenario you're in, um, so if you're in the classroom, that would be a face covering. Um, you would not be considered close, having had close contact if, um, say a classmate, um, was to be diagnosed with COVID-19 in most scenarios.
Tara, um, there's a question that's come up in the chat about why there's a difference between the isolation of 10 days in these directives versus what we've all been hearing from the CDC and other sources about 14 days.
So isolation is different, so isolation is if you are presumed to have COVID-19. So if you are ill with COVID-19, um, people, people are no longer contagious after having had symptoms or 10 days from a positive. So if you've had symptoms, 10 days later, you're, you are no longer contagious. Um, or if you're asymptomatic but have a positive COVID test, 10 days from that, that test date, you're considered not contagious. The quarantine, so if you've had close contact with someone who is positive uh, for COVID-19, but you have not had, do not have any symptoms yourself, you can develop symptoms anywhere between two and 14 days. So that's where that 14-day period comes from.
And that's our next scenario. So if you flip to slide six, that's exactly what we're going to talk about. Those individuals that do not have COVID-19 symptoms, but have had that close contact. You can see in this scenario that folks will be staying home for those 14 days, as Tara said. You know, whether you've had a negative and/or positive test, or you haven't been tested, you're going to be in self-quarantine. I'm sorry, if you have a positive test, then it flips back to the 10 days since the positive test. My apologies.
Thank you.
And all of this comes from addendum five that the state had provided us. That's it, Janet, just those six slides for tonight.
Thank you, Janet.
And then the, the, the booklet that you've put together that will be distributed is much more detailed and thorough, and, and staff and parents will all be getting that so that they have some chance to absorb it and to understand.
Yeah, yes, and we're working on having it translated into Spanish, so.
Yeah, it won't be much help if you can't understand it.
Absolutely.
And I asked that we get that sent to us. I was having a hard time reading it on my screen because it does a split screen in Zoom. So I saw all of you guys on one side and that thing on the other. Can we get that emailed to us?
The presentation, Tracy?
Yes, please.
Absolutely.
It's just hard to read when I'm looking at people presenting and trying to read it at the same time.
Sure.
And those are, that, that is all taken directly from the manual that, that you'll have as well.
And I actually forwarded the manual to the board members tonight, so you'll have a copy. But we can also.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes, Jaime, go ahead.
Yes, I think this was mentioning, mentioned last night, but could you please clarify, what's the protocol for testing at school? Or how, how does it work? I'm, I'm not clear on that. I mean, I'm, the student tested somewhere else. If, if he, you know, they, they, we have a student who's coughing continuously, then what happened? Comes to school, is in the classroom, he is continuously coughing, there may be a fever. What happened to that student? What's the protocol there?
Do you want me to?
Go ahead, Tara. We're, we're not testing students at school, but I'll let Tara answer the question about the symptoms being exhibited in classrooms.
So if they, if, if a student or, if a student presents with symptoms in a classroom, they'll be, the, they'll be directed to the health office. Um, and if they do have symptoms of COVID, we do have an isolation room in each building. Um, that isolation room, um, it will be only for those students who are presenting for COVID-19 symptoms. And that is a place where they can safely wait with supervision um, for someone to come and pick them up. Uh, and that will initiate, um, you know, the, those slides that we just reviewed. Um, so you have symptoms, and so then you can have that choice of, you know, following your doctor's recommendations of getting tested, you know, or waiting those 10 days before return or getting an alternate diagnosis.
But are the students, you know, they're like temperatures? Uh, you know, temperatures taken as the students come in?
So at, at this time, they haven't, we're, we won't be, we're asking families and staff to screen their children before they come to school.
But we're not doing it.
But we are not doing it at the school unless, unless we're, unless we're concerned for a student or a staff member, then obviously we have the ability to take temperatures. But we're not doing it as a routine to take everyone's temperature daily.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Katina, do you have your hand up?
Yes, yes, thank you. Um, so how are we handling contact tracing for the person who has been symptomatic? And also parent notification for the children who have been coming in contact with the staff member and/or the other children? And how fast and who's responsible?
So the Department of Public Health has stated repeatedly to us that we will not start the contact tracing process until the student has actually received a positive test. That's step one. I think that's really important for everyone to know because their thought process is, is that a lot of times these other illnesses are going to be common, such as the flu, strep throat in children. At that time, we will then work with our local health department, the North Central District Health Department, uh, in collaboration. They will be doing the majority of the contact tracing. Our school nurses will be assisting to determine who was in contact. And then notifications based on their findings will be sent out to staff and to families.
There is an issue about how fast you, one can get test results. That is something that we really, as a school district, don't have much control over. It is very unfortunate. I will just say, I've been tested three times. And each time I've gotten results back within 48 hours. Even though the signs outside the hospital said six to 10 days. So I think that, that's anecdotal and, you know, the, the, the tests. I've had been tested three times during the whole course of this as recently as a few weeks ago. So I, it's hard to say. I mean, some people I know are having much longer turnaround times for their results and it's, but we can't. I hear what the staff is saying. I'm not defending the inadequacy of the test turnaround time. But some people take 10 days to get their results back and there's something in the chat box about somebody just taking 11 days.
I think it's important.
The ability to do in-house testing at the school.
And I think it's important to remember that those students will be home during that period of time and not around other students. You know, we're going to be very diligent about working with families and, and our nurses will be in constant contact during the time at which students are gone to see if there's any new developments. I mean, this is going to take a lot of late work. I do have to just tell you how thankful I am of our nursing department. If any of you have met, I think there's probably a couple of them on today. I have to go scroll through. But they really have worked tirelessly throughout this entire summer. I, I just want everyone to know. Volunteering time, looking for resources, putting together different samples. Really, they were a large part of putting this product together tonight for families and for staff. You know, we, we are all working together. So I just want to take a minute again to thank them for all that they've done and, and trying to answer everyone's questions.
I have another question. Hypothetically, a student, a test is positive. Okay, he stayed home, isolation, but that student have two sister, a brother. All of them, you know, at different levels, different grades at district. What happened to those students? What?
So at the, so at the point that their, their sibling tests positive, then they would be moving into that quarantine phase. And that quarantine phase starts from the first, for the, the quarantine starts when they've, when their sibling complete, is cleared to return to school. Their quarantine will start. So they'll be home while their, their sibling is sick, unless that sibling can be quarantined entirely from the rest of the family and they're inside their home. And then when that, when that sibling is cleared and, and okay to return to school, so generally after 10 days, that's when the, the siblings quarantine will begin. And so then they will stay home for an additional 14 days.
How is it monitored? Does it monitor that?
So that'll be happening for, for our students, that'll be happening with our, with our school nurses, but this is also overseen through the Department of Public Health. You know, they're, they're kind of spearheading the statewide contact tracing and that is, that is part of that process.
I also want to say that we have made a change that our nurses will now have access to the attendance platform. They, they have not historically, we've always worked collaboratively with the, the secretaries, but because we're really wanting to be diligent about making sure that we know, you know, we know who is connected to which families and the, the nurses will have access to that and will be able to put in those attendance reasons so that we can really ensure that kids are not coming to school when they're supposed to be in isolation and or self quarantining.
Um, I would like to recognize Tracy Lambert, who said she had a question.
And figure out how to unmute myself. Um, so yesterday, Mr. Garvey spoke about his child breaking his leg and having to miss some school because of it. And all three of my children at one point or another during their high school careers, whether due to sports or just their clumsiness, had concussions and missed school. And I got a letter saying, you know, your child's missed more than so many days. How is this COVID, whether it's parental fears? Because both are going to be affected and this all affects our accountability index. How is this all going to be taken care of? How is this going to be addressed with parents? If, you know, if I still had a child in school and I'm grateful right now, I don't, although I have two in college, but you know, if this gets addressed that, you know, after nine days, you're suddenly getting a letter. Are we going to be blanketing the district with letters? How are we going to be making sure? And how are we going to handle staff if one of their children in their class and they're their children? These teachers take this to heart, but if one of their students in their class gets sick and they are, you know, required to quarantine through no fault of their own. It's not like they're going on vacation or they're, you know, licking doorknobs or anything disgusting like that, but they could get sick just because they're around students. And I just don't understand how we're not going to penalize them if they have to take time off. And still make sure there are people in our classrooms. I'm not sure if this is a nurse question or an administration question, but I'm just curious how that all works in there.
So as it stands right now, believe this or not, the State Department of Ed has not lapsed the attendance requirements, which I find absolutely troubling. I don't know how you can have all these things going on and not. So that may change. It's very possible they'll make that decision. But I agree with you. There, it's, it would be ridiculous for us to follow the previous process of sending out letters every so many days. Obviously, everyone wants kids to come to school whenever they're healthy and we want to make sure our staff come to work whenever they're healthy. But I think we've already thought about how we cannot follow that path this year, given all that's going on. And hopefully the State Department of Ed will lap some of those requirements, so it's not something that we have to even be worried about. But right now they have not done that.
Now that we have the distance learning option, which we didn't have.
If you go home, you can, if you're feeling well, you can access.
If you're feeling well enough, be able to participate. If not, then you would have a, like the equivalent of a doctor's note if you had a positive test.
But I know that, I'm sorry.
That you weren't able to participate in the same way, right? Correct?
But I know that everyone who goes home is not going to be feeling well enough to be logged on to, you know, to be learning virtually.
No, what I'm saying though, is you have the equivalent of a doctor's note if you get a positive test result.
Correct.
Where you're, where you're told you have to quarantine.
Right.
Does that work the same for our staff?
Meaning do they get a, if they were tested, would they have documentation?
Or, you know, if they even had to quarantine because one of their students were tested positive or something like that, even before the test, do they have to burn through all their vacation time or all of their sick time or something before something else kicks in? And then what happens if they get
Oh, there's.
Oh, in March, when things return to normal, whatever that's going to look like, hopefully.
There are several things that are in place to support people as a result of having to not be able to be at work because of COVID. I think HR is on the call. I think, I thought, I thought, I saw.
I saw Stephanie.
I, I'm here.
There you are.
So what happens is they would get the CARES Act, the 80 hours. And then after that, if they had to be away, I would have, I have to check. I believe we would have to work to give them their sick time, absolutely. Because the other provisions are for different things, the two thirds pay or whatever, but they definitely would use their sick time after. From what I can, I'll, I'll go here and look.
But the CARES Act covers them for 80 hours, essentially two weeks worth of work or so.
Yeah. And it's a one-time provision, unfortunately.
So if, if it's happening a lot, then I think we're going to have to cross that bridge and figure out a way to deal with it.
I mean, the other thing is if, if the rates do increase in the community, then, then we have to follow Dr. Youngberg's first slide she showed yesterday. Where it'll, where we might be changing the format of our learning. So it's, so it's never one without the other. So it's what the, what's happening in the community at large and what's happening in our school system.
And certainly, you know, it certainly will have to pay attention that if there are staff members who have repeated incidences of having to be isolated.
And also, it'll be important to make sure that you're wearing that appropriate PPE, like making sure that you're wearing that mask and that face shield. Because if you are wearing that appropriate PPE, that the Department of Public Health is saying your risk is, is, your risk is, is lower in, in that situation.
Is there a Board of Ed policy that we should suspend on staff attendance? I can look that up while you guys are talking.
And I can get some clarification on that. I have not heard my colleagues in the area have such a discussion, but let me find out.
I just want to make sure everyone's protected.
Right, it might be that there are a handful of policies that we need to take action on as a board, that, that are sort of not, that are obsolete or need to be loosened during the time of COVID. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll look into it and see if any other districts around us have had similar questions. And if so, what's the direction they went in and find out?
Katina?
Yes, I was going to echo what Mrs. Lambert said in terms of, you know, staff members getting kind of letters that are like, you have been missing too much work and then have to show up at the principal's office that people need not to be penalized or embarrassed about that. That's one. Number two, I'm concerned about parents reacting, overreacting or, or, you know, or kids saying, oh, he's absent or she's absent because they have COVID and, you know, and families not knowing and then turning around and saying, oh, the district is not telling us, the district is not informing us. So what could we do to, my dog, I'm sorry for my, my dog is barking. What could we do to ameliorate that, you know, blame and shame that will be happening as a, as a result of being super concerned about this?
Well, I know obviously that's part of the whole community building piece inside our classrooms to make kids understand how we want them to treat each other and how they want to be treated. So that definitely comes from the foundations we build in our classrooms at all grade levels. Tara, I don't know if you or Suzanne, if either of you have heard back from the Department of Public Health about the way we're going to notify the communication around cases in our buildings. I've been waiting for that information. You may have it, you may have gotten it before me.
Um, so, I mean, typically the, they, they allow us to direct that. We do have some guidances. We'll receive guidance from them for who should we see the letter?
Right.
But we'll get to, we'll get to write our own letter.
Okay, so I, last I heard from them, they were going to give us a form letter, you know, a script letter and that there was going to be some protocol as to who was going to be notified, but maybe they're going to talk about that with us each time.
Yeah, certainly who will be notified will, will happen on a case by case basis. And it might be different in like a kindergarten class versus a high school class. Just because of the way kids may, the behaviors might be different in those two scenarios.
Thank you.
Lynn, can I just make a comment?
And, you know, at, and conversation in the chat and, you know, we probably won't be able to answer all of them this evening. But I think that the staff should know that the board is well aware of the unforeseen things that this will present for us as, as far as personnel matters, you know. Go and, you know, I think that we will work on these things as they come up if we can't answer them all right now.
We will get the staff clarification around the, after the 80 hours, what then if you're in multiple quarantines? It looks like that's a common concern. So we'll work on that and getting you clarification about the CARES Act.
So I, I looked up, I did look, look up, I, when I looked at the CARES Act, it is a one-time provision. And so that 80 hours is not charged to anything. It's, it's a, it's the 80 hours that they're paid while they're off. And then after that, it is use of their sick time.
Okay.
But I, but, but it also expires at a certain point under the CARES Act. So, you know, unless, right, yeah, unless the federal government decides to extend some of these provisions. So you know, depending on how long this rolls along, we'll be dealing with new issues constantly, I'm sure. There was a question about if a child, if a parent is non-compliant with getting their child tested.
I don't think we're allowed to force people to have tests. I just know we can mandate whatever our procedures are how they can, when they can return to our schools.
So it only, it's so, it means that we could keep them out for the, for the whole time if we suspect, right?
That is correct.
Okay, um, are there any other questions that the people on the board have for Suzanne or Tara?
Lynn, can I just make a comment?
Yes, go ahead Paula.
You know, as someone who has been through active COVID in a facility, I don't mean to minimize fears or simplify, but the adherence to the precautions for everyone, especially the teachers, is so important. Masking, sanitizing, I don't think we can say it enough and I hope in the P, the PD that, that occurs that this will definitely be emphasized. That is so important in keeping yourself and people around you safe. So to sanitize, wash your hands. Again, I don't mean to simplify, but really, that is basic.
Thanks Paul.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, so we have that under our belt. We have a little bit of a better understanding about where we are with the protocols. This will be something I'm sure we'll constantly be talking about as, as things roll out. But I'd like to ask Tracy Youngberg to sort of move on to the next item on our, in our discussion, which is her recommendations. Based on our discussion last night and our directives to go back and talk to a lot of different folks, the different unions and whatever. And I think you did an amazing job today talking to most everybody. So go ahead.
Okay, so I did have an opportunity to talk with at least representation from three of our largest bargaining units. The teachers, WFEP and the WA, the Leadership Union. I didn't have specific conversations with other bargaining units, primarily because they're 12-month employees and it doesn't change. It wouldn't change if we were to back the school year up, it wouldn't change how their workday is moving because they're already back at work and doing their thing. It does appear that the, the school system could certainly benefit from having some additional time in terms of preparation. Obviously, the thing that came up yesterday was completion of the inspection, of the ventilation inspection. There's also other small things, like if you can just think about the discussion we're having tonight, just to process through how we're going to handle positive COVID cases, we spent the last 40 minutes talking about something that all of our staff members are going to need to understand at a very deep level. So that's just one tiny piece of a, of a much larger puzzle. So the more time we have to prepare, I think would be beneficial. I do understand that not everybody wants the school year to start at a different time. So I prepared some scenarios to, to sort of talk through how this might work. I'm, I'm also very much aware of the fact that if you were making plans to return to work with your students, you know, returning to school on September 1st, that if we back the school year up, this is going to be an inconvenience to you. And I totally get that. That that could be, you know, something that could make families very angry. So I, I can see it from both ends. I'm going to make some recommendations tonight and show you the scenarios and then let the board figure out where, bless you, I think you sneezed. Janet, can you please share the, the scenario screen, please? Hopefully, we're going to be able to do this now. There it is. All right. So there's an awful lot of information on the screen, so I'll just walk through it carefully. Obviously, one of the scenarios is that things stay the way they are and we start on Monday with the, with the adults coming back to school. And the students continue to return to school on Tuesday, September 1st. If that is not the direction we're going in, then the first scenario I put up has the students starting on Tuesday, September 8th, so a week later. That would then provide 10 days of staff development. That is not my favorite scenario because I think 10 days of staff development is an awful long time. Not that I don't think we have a number of things to focus on. I just think 10 consecutive days can get a little overwhelming. So I have a, I have what I think is a solution to that in scenario two, but I'm just going to walk you down scenario one right now. So the certified staff in this scenario one would have 10 staff development days. The non-certified staff would have five. scenario one right now. So the certified staff in this scenario one would have 10 staff development days. The non-certified staff would have five. I would still maintain the early dismissal day for staff on September 4th, which was something that was originally going to happen. So I feel like they shouldn't be penalized if we end up making this, this change. The first week of school will continue to be early dismissal days, and that is in hopes of getting everyone used to this whole new normal. The new, the new routines in school, the new safety precautions, wearing a mask all day, those kinds of things. The district would take two professional development days off its calendar. That would be February 1st and March 19th. And if we were to make this happen, the last day of school would be Monday, June 14th. And there would be no changes to the payroll for non-certified 10-month employees. They would begin getting paid on August 24th, which would be the day in scenario one, we would still have convocation on Monday. Scenario two would push convocation back three days. That would mean that convocation, the school year would start on August 27th. That would mean we'd have seven staff development days, four of which the non-certified staff would attend. Again, early dismissal and the fourth would remain. And again, the early dismissals for the students that first week. I am proposing that we use the Wednesdays. Remember, Wednesdays are the days that our students do not come to campus. But the staff members, or actually, the staff members now have an option of coming to campus or working from home. But we would be able to put in half PD days during those Wednesdays and still allow for all the other things that teachers need to be doing. So I feel like we're recouping a couple of those days. And the reason why I think that's really beneficial is as much as I, I know our teachers are really eager to plan and prepare for our students, I feel like until we actually start doing the things, the new things that we were being asked to do in terms of the hybrid model and technology and students being in front of them in person and, and on the screen, I don't know if we can actually understand what's going to happen until we actually go through it. So I feel like leaving those Wednesdays as a potential professional development day gives us a chance to adjust on, as we're going, rather than trying to figure it all out before and then realizing, wow, we really don't have a handle on this. Again, in scenario two, the district would take the two PD days and we'd end on Monday, June 14th. And again, no implications on the payroll side. Scenario three pushes the students start out to September 14th. I am really not in favor of this. I, I know that kids, like I know kids want to go back to school and I feel like pushing it off for that, for that long could have, I don't know, it could just be a real bummer for the kids and staff members as well. If we did go that route and start school that much later, convocation would be pushed back to August 31st. There would be nine staff development days, and you can sort of read the rest from there. School, the school year would end later. It would end on Friday, June 18th. And I would still have to work out the payroll implications because that's actually starting a full week later than we normally plan. So it, it could have some things that I have to work out with finance and Rita. I don't know if there's questions. It's a lot of information to sort of take in. I can tell you that if I had to choose of the three scenarios, I am in favor of scenario two. I'm not alone in that I was able to, to show people, you know, I'm not trying to sway the board, the board's vote. I will respect your decision however you play it out, but scenario two, I think from an educational and an adult learning standpoint, makes the most sense. I do recognize that it still could be an inconvenience to people who, who explain, you know, who are planning on their kids going back to school on September 1st. And by the way, just another shameless plug, if families can hear me out there, please complete the survey. I think we're up to about 900 families. We need to get closer to the 2,400 mark. So please, if you haven't completed your survey, letting us know if you're coming back to school in person or if you're opting virtual, I need you to do that as soon as possible.
Well, thank you, Tracy. I appreciate you giving us some scenarios to chew on rather than, you know, as a jumping off point rather than just starting from scratch. And would you share with the, with the board, like, who you've spoken with today after, you know, that, that helped inform this, this, these recommendations?
Sure. So, well, Neil and I met to flush out the basic scenarios and have some conversations around that. Then I had a meeting this morning with the WFT, the Executive Board. I had a meeting with the WFEP Executive Board, and I shared the information with my leadership team at the school and district level.
Does the board have any questions? Yes, Mark.
Yeah, Lynn, I, I don't really have a question, but in order to move forward, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion that we accept scenario two as recommended by the superintendent and move on with that.
So motions on the floor to adopt scenario two. Do I hear a second?
I have a question before we move.
I need a second on it before.
A second, Ida.
I think by Ida. Okay, now we can discuss. Himey.
Yes, Dr. Youngberg, you, you mentioned that you're not alone. Who else is with you? The people you met this morning with?
Um, yeah, I mean, they didn't, we didn't take a formal vote, a roll call or anything, but we had discussions about the benefits of having, of, you know, potentially going with scenario two. I, I think that there was a general sense at our school buildings that having a few extra days was going to be beneficial in that there's extra things to do this year that we haven't had to do before. And of course, the concerns about the ventilation inspection by pushing the school year back a few days gives us a, a little extra time to get in the results and figure out where we are.
So you're confident that all of the ones you meet with this morning are for scenario two?
All right, well, I just, WFEP just agreed that scenario two is the best. I don't know if there's anyone else out there that wants to step up and plug in the chat room there. Like I said, I didn't roll call, I didn't do a roll call, so I can't be 100% sure, but.
That's okay.
They seem to be in agreement. Is the teacher union on? Because they're, they're a fairly large group. I don't know if anyone there wants to weigh in, in the chat room.
While we're waiting, Katina has a question.
Okay.
Unmute myself. Thank you. One of my concerns besides the air quality that we talked about last night is, is what we still are missing in our schools. So like, for example, the cameras and the, you know, having the computer ready for kids as well as staff members and other equipment that might be missing in, in the schools. Do we have, so my question is the following. Do we have any idea regarding when are these items going to arrive? Or is there any way? I, I know this is a, is a problem, you know, nationwide, but it would be terrible to start school and not have what the equipment and materials necessary that the kids and staff needs in the schools.
So I can tell you that we have all the safety equipment necessary. We have all the PPE to start the school year. In fact, we're working to deliver it from central office to the schools now. So that's not a question. We are still waiting on a little over 100 webcams to come in. I'm not that concerned about the webcams because in the event they didn't arrive on time, and I hope they do, we do have cameras in our computers and we are prepared to roll out the new laptops, not only for the students, but also for the teachers at the high school and the middle school. So I feel like we're in, we're in decent, decent shape. We're in the best shape ever in terms of technology in the district. But, but I, I feel like the need to have extra time is, is even deeper than that. It's beyond the materials. It's a totally different mindset. We're focused on things that schools have never been focused on before, right? We're focused on things like a hospital might be focused on. So I do think that, and you can look in the chat room, Dr. Gomez has lots of support for scenario two in the chat room. I think everyone who's trying to get prepared to open schools and be ready to support the teachers first and then the students would benefit from having some extra time to do that.
Good.
Um, so are we, is there any more discussion on the board's part on the motion that's on the floor? Tracy, Lambert.
I have a question. I have seen, I've been working this whole time, and I have seen anything from t-shirts strung across people's face to bandanas to actual masks. We, nobody, you know, can get N95 masks. Maybe there's been a place you can source it from, but the average store and stuff like that can't get N95 masks. And we're expecting parents to provide some kind of face covering for the students. Is there a minimum required covering, like at least a surgical mask or the one most people are walking around with? Or are we going to let kids come through the door with cut-up t-shirts on their faces or bandanas or something like that? Is there a minimum? And how are we going to communicate this to the people what is expected? Because they have vastly different abilities to protect people and I don't want, you know, Suzie Q coming through the door with a, a ripped up t-shirt. And that may be all, all they can afford. So I want to make sure there's equity as well. And I know we have some to provide. Maybe they just cut up a t-shirt where, whereas, you know, a teacher who is hyper vigilant or a parent who's hyper vigilant buys respirators for their kids or something like that. I'm wondering what the recommendation, what the expectation is for those kind of PPEs.
So I understand is that we have tens of thousands of, of face masks on stock, in stock right now. We can provide them to the kids if they come in with something inadequate.
We do. We have about 43,000 right now, and I think there may even be more than that because the fire department was here earlier dropping off boxes. But we, what's happening now across the state is schools are adopting policies to specify exactly what kind of covering they want to see. In the guidelines, it's, it's sort of broad, but I think that they have come up with some more specific requirements or, or more specifics around what might be better for us. So we're going to, we're going to figure out how, how to follow some of the, the school systems that have just started putting those policy in place so that we have one.
Should we be, should we be adopting a policy next Wednesday when we meet that clarifies that?
Very possible.
The, the state is supposed to be coming out with an addendum specifically to masks. So I think that will probably give us some more clarity.
Well, addendum 72, but in the meantime, parents are coming into Willard's where I work and asking if we have children's masks, and we do, plug there, but I'm not sure if they're the ones people have asked me, are they the ones that the school is requiring? And I don't know what the actual requirements are, so I honestly can't tell them.
Okay, I'll get you that information.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion on the motion that's on the floor? Katina? You have to unmute yourself.
Yep. Tracy, thank you for, for saying the requirement because I hope that in this moment, nobody sent home or penalized for not having uniforms, uh, you know, the appropriate mask, whatever, because what we want is to have the children in school and we need to be flexible about that, please. Thank you.
I noticed I was, I was misquoted in the Chronicle. We, obviously, our goal is to educate the students and their families should they not want to wear a mask or come in without a mask. We're not looking to penalize, but at some point, if we can't get them to understand why it's a safety concern for them not to be in masks, we may have to ask them to take advantage of our virtual, virtual options. But first, we obviously know we're trying to work with compat, you know, be compassionate and, and work with educating the community about keeping everyone safe. So our goal is not to throw kids out of school. That's counterproductive to the mission, but we need to keep people safe, so.
Right. And I, and, and certainly the stockpile of masks we have isn't anything to brag about because it won't last that long if a lot of people need them.
That is absolutely correct.
So we need to do our best to encourage people to get them if, on good ones if they can on their own, but we need to be, help people out if they need them. Or if they forget them, you know, what if they didn't go on the bus and they walked to school or they got dropped off by somebody and they got out of the car and they didn't have a mask? We need to have them on hand. So, was there any further discussion on the, on the, on the motion though that's on the floor? Okay, if not, then I'll take a roll call vote on the motion that's on the floor, which is to adopt scenario number two, which has been starting on the 8th of September with convocation, starting on Thursday, the 27th of August. So Janet, would you do a roll call, please?
Certainly. Ms. Haney?
Aye.
Ms. Dunnick? I don't think she's joined us this evening.
Right, I haven't seen her.
Dr. Caban Owen?
Aye.
Mr. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Ray?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Lambert, aye.
Dr. Gomez?
Aye.
Dr. Galucci?
Aye.
Ms. Hyde?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We've adopted the scenario number two. And there's another possible motion that could be made this evening that was suggested by Mark Doyle on.
Yeah, Lynn, I'd, I'd like to make the motion that pending the CICA's ruling in our Wednesday meeting that we don't start sports until the board meets Wednesday to evaluate the situation from the CIC recommendation that it's sports do not start until we have our Wednesday meeting to make the decision.
Second.
So motion made last, I mean, by Mark, it's seconded by, I think it was Tracy Lambert?
Yes.
To to, to say that the, no full sports are supposed to commence until the board has a chance to meet on Wednesday, the 26th, I think it is, and take formal action. Any discussion on that? Okay, then we'll take a roll call vote.
Ms. Haney?
Aye.
Dr. Caban Owen?
Aye.
Mr. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Ray?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Dr. Gomez?
Himey, are you voting?
All right.
Aye.
Dr. Galucci?
Abstain.
Ms. Hyde?
Aye. Motion carries. Are there any other motions or actions that the, is there any other motion any board member would like to put on the table right now? Okay, hearing none. I'd just like to thank all, it has been really remarkable over the past months during the, since COVID, how many people have participated in our meetings online. It's, um, it's really amazing. When I tell my coworkers about it, they're like flabbergasted. And so I just want to acknowledge all the time that many of you have spent sitting online, listening to us and, and and trying to converse with us, and it's much appreciated. We really appreciate your engagement. And I want to thank Dr. Youngberg and the central office staff for the extraordinary amount of work that they've been doing under very trying circumstances. And I know there hasn't been much vacation time at all taken by anybody lately, and I hope you're all going to not burn out before.
We got a few days in there. We're okay.
So, um, so given that, we'll open it up to public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment?
Dr. Youngberg?
Is there somebody who would like to speak during public comment?
Yes, this is Cindy Albert.
Okay, go right ahead.
I'm just, could you please just review scenario two?
You'd like me to review it?
Yes, please.
Sure.
That's sort of not what we usually do during public comment, but I want to make sure everybody understands what's going on. So we will do that. Go ahead.
So in scenario two, the students would start school a week later than we had originally planned on Tuesday, September 8th. Convocation is pushed, pushed back by three days, which would leave our certified staff having seven staff development days prior to the students arriving. Our non-certified staff would have four, four staff development days, the WFEP primarily. There would be an early dismissal staff day for the, for the staff members on September 4th. The first week of school for the students, which would be September 8th through the 11th, would be early dismissal days for both the students and staff. We would have the opportunity to use our Wednesday virtual days for some additional professional development for the staff members once the students arrive. And we'd be removing two of the district's PD days from the calendar and adding them, you know, taking them off the school year. So the school year would end on Monday, June 14th, and there would be no implications to anyone's payroll. So in other words, our 10-month employees would be paid the same as if we started on the 24th or the 27th.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment?
Yes, I would. I have my name on the chat. My name is.
My name is.
Yes.
Ruben.
Yeah, go ahead.
My question is this. With scenario two, are we benefiting from the extra time to utilize, say, August 24th through that whole week for extra PD? Or do we have to wait to utilize that following week?
So we wouldn't be offering PD until after convocation? But if there was something that you could safely do in your classroom that made you feel more prepared, you're welcome to do that.
So you don't see, you don't, you don't feel as, as the director of, or doctor of our, of our school union here and teaching that we could all benefit from the Google Classroom, the, the videos, you know, learning how to use all that? You don't think that that would utilize our best?
So actually, Karen, we're, we're in the process of trying to roll out a whole series of things to the staff from a virtual standpoint. So if we're able to get it out to you, in fact, I, I see Mr. Weathers the top of his head anyway. I know he and I were talking about trying to push out some of the information earlier versus later so that maybe people could get a handle on what we're expecting and feel a little more comfortable about it, which was some of the feedback we received from the WFT. I don't know, Neil, if you have anything to add on that?
I would love that.
So, so it won't be like the full PD or anything, but we plan on sharing some general information tomorrow to the staff regarding some of the virtual PD they'll be receiving in the upcoming days as well as the instructional vision. And during the meeting of the WT, FT executive board, they, they shared some questions and, and the hope is at least while we can't do a full PD, at least hopefully alleviate any anxiety that some of the staff may be feeling about all this, many new things we have to do.
Thank you, Mr. Weathers.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak during public comment? I know there were some questions about survey numbers, updated survey numbers. I don't think we have.
I think Janet just said she just took a look at the survey and we're up to 911 families have responded.
Yeah, but we don't have the details about how that breaks down. I'm sure you'll be providing that to the board.
Yes, and tomorrow is, that's supposed to be the deadline and 911 is not nearly where we need to be to make a determination about what's happening. So we're going to have schools making a whole lot of phone calls tomorrow to catch us up.
Any other public comment? I see in the chat, there's a question about parents getting instruction about how to work with their students at home on the distance learning piece.
Yes, we're, not only are we trying to put together some parent tutorials, but we're trying to develop some videos that they can watch that would help them understand. Neil, you might be starring in a video. I forgot to tell you that this morning. He's always on board.
And any comment before we close the meeting?
Let's just make sure Neil gets his haircut.
Mr. Doyle, them's fighting words.
I asked if there will be an open house on the 28th?
That's a great question and that's one of the questions we have to iron out now with convocation. If convocation is the 27th, not only do we have to figure out that piece, we also have to figure out the rollout of the new laptops because we had planned on doing that on the 27th. So that's one of the things I mentioned to the leadership, to my principals, that I have to iron out those details. I will be back in touch with the families on that as soon as we figure out what's the best way to proceed. I, I think that we probably could still pull it off for the 28th, but I don't want to speak for the schools without having a chance to connect with them.
Okay, so stay tuned on that.
Stay tuned on that and I'll, I'll make an all-call so everybody knows.
Well, I want to just thank everybody. And I, I see Kaylee Vera, grade three, on the, on, on, on the meeting tonight and she has very good atten, you have very good attention span. Thank you very much for paying attention to all of this. And I think you have a future to be a school board member if you would like, once you get to be 18. So, um, I just want to. Pardon?
Is Kaylee a teacher?
She is.
Yeah, she's not a student, she's a teacher, a third grade.
Oh, okay, I thought she said Kaylee Vera, grade three. Oh, I'm sorry, I only saw grade three and I thought, oh, she's in grade three.
So good attention span.
Yeah.
I thought you looked very mature for a three-year, for a third grader. Okay, well, thank you, everybody. And we're going to have a regular board meeting next Wednesday evening, 26th. And of course, if, if we need to have a special meeting to take action on something before then, we will. But hopefully, we'll be set and we'll be meeting at our regular time at 7:00 PM on the 26th. Thank you very much.
I move, we adjourn.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move, we adjourn.
And teach the board. Thank you, everybody.
Casey, for everything.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.